Call to order, the Waverly City Council meeting for November 20th. Do we have the agenda? Do we have motion on that?
We have approval of the agenda. Make suggestion on one change though.
Okay.
And to accommodate some travel plans, that type of thing. It would be helpful to move the number seven, first reading of the ordinance concerning rezoning of Fourth Street and 10th Avenue up. Talking to a few folks here in the crowd, they think the majority, if not all of the folks that would want to show some interest in that are here, so I would ask that we move that to item number two.
Second.
Been seconded? All in favor of?
I just want to make sure that everyone that was planning on coming for that item is here, or do we need to wait for we're okay to go?
Okay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded, those in favor of the amendment to the agenda, say aye.
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 Okay, so then approval of the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have our agenda approved. Our next item of business is the oath of office. Administrator James Bronner, you get to administer the oath to?
That's what I'm told.
Everybody else that's here. So, could we have Rodney Dranko, Ryan Bergen, Anrathie, hospital trustees Roger Johnson and Barbara Lutz also come on up?
Don't you do them all at once?
Yep.
We've done them all in past.
Yeah.
All at once. And myself, I get to go.
This is your first time, James, doing?
On this side of it, yeah. I've already four times.
There you go, alright.
I'll probably do two more times, because we have hospital trustees as well.
Do the hospital trustees, after the trustees. It's part of all that.
Actually, we'll do you first. You're gonna do them first, or last?
We're gonna go down to the first. So, we'll start with four minutes. Say aye, say train, then we'll go through the process, nobody can go. So, aye.
Aye, I'm Rocky.
Aye, Brian Bergen, ready, ready, and we'll go to decision. Call it, wasn't it?
Aye, Rodney Dranko.
Aye. Repeat after me. Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially?
And I will faithfully and impartially?
The best of my ability?
To the best of my ability?
Discharge all duties of the office?
Discharge all duties of the office?
Of council member at large?
Of council member at large?
Of first ward council member? Of third ward council member?
Of third ward council member?
Of the fourth ward council. For the city of Waverly, Iowa?
For the city of Waverly, Iowa.
As now, or here and after?
As now, or here and after?
Required by law?
Required by law.
That's it. Congratulations. Okay, next item on the agenda is a proclamation.
A little background on this is kind of piggybacking off of Black Friday and Cyber Monday is a new movement called Giving Tuesday. It's a global movement encouraging charitable giving during the holiday season, held the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. Waverly's area nonprofit organizations have joined together to harness the power of partnership to transform how people think about, talk about, and participate in the giving season. Giving Tuesday is a celebration of the many ways to give back to others. Whether you choose to give a financial gift, donate items to an organization or family in need, or donate your time and talents, giving, especially during the holiday season, is a wonderful way to support your community. On November 28th, we ask our friends and neighbors to pledge to participate in the movement and give back to the organizations who do so much for our community. Post your photo sharing while you give back on social media with the hashtags #GivingTuesday and @WaverlyGives. Join the movement, spread the word, show your support this holiday season. And then I get to read the proclamation, which is, "Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favored causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Waverly, Iowa, and whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now I therefore, Tim Kangas, as Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Waverly, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2017 as Giving Tuesday in the city of Waverly, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful." And witnesses, sign us their own. Motion on that?
I move approval, the proclamation of Giving Tuesday for November 28th, 2017.
Well, seconded. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. We have a proclamation. Okay, next item is public hearing. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on our ordinance adopting the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. City clerk, do we have any written or?
We do not, your honor.
Any comments on that? Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move, move, go to a motion.
I'll move the second reading of ordinance 1028, an ordinance adopting the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion by council? This is just kind of the formality for the audience and those at home. We have to do this every year when we've made changes to the ordinances and whatnot throughout the year. This just certifies that those are all. Now, what we've got. Okay, roll call vote?
Gabe.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
A vote of six to nothing, we have second reading. Now is the time for public comments for items not on the agenda. If anyone has any issues they wish to address that are items not on the agenda, please approach the mic.
Good evening. My name is Jim Addy, representing the hospital, and I wanted to say to Barb Lutz and Roger Johnson, our newly elected hospital trustees, that I thank them for their time and effort in running again for the, for our hospital board. They, along with our other board members, have been keys in the growth and sustainability of not only the hospital, but I believe the viability of the community. To the outgoing council members, thank you for your time on behalf of the hospital. We appreciate your service. To the oncoming council members, thank you very much for giving your time and energies, and we look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And if it's not out of order, I'd like to thank Jim Addy for his service to the community.
And everyone.
Yes.
Any additional comments from anyone? Seeing none, we will move to our consent calendar. We have nine items on the consent calendar for today. Pay request from WHKNS, HKS and Company for the Third Street Southeast Pedestrian Bridge for $3,578.48. Pay request from ACOM for the Southeast Waverly Flood Protection 2017 for $9,250.24. Pay request from McClure Engineering for the Airport Bulk Hangar Improvements 2017 for $875. Pay request from McClure Engineering for the Airport Runway 29 Extension 2018 for $16,206.75. Pay request from McClure Engineering for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction 2018 for $25,504.10. Class E liquor license for Hy-Vee Incorporated. A Class C beer permit for Quick Star number 752. Class C liquor license for Prairie Links Golf and Event Center, and the castings for herstments for October. Motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Oops, sorry, Dan.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just asked a question about the airport runway extension. Is there still, there's still a property that we need to acquire for that? Is that true?
Not for that project.
Not for this specific project?
Not for the runway extension.
Excuse me?
Not for the runway extension.
And this is work that's already been done, correct? I mean, this is a pay request?
Yeah, it's a bill, yeah. I was just asking.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all in favor of the consent calendar? Say yes.
Yes.
Close, say no. Okay, consent calendar is approved. Onto regular business. Our first item of business is presentation by AHTS Architects on the South Riverside Park Project. Turn this over to Tab.
Thank you. Larry Kurtz and Andrew Bell are here to give a presentation of what we've worked on for the past couple of months. We've had three meetings with a committee of interested citizens to get their input. We're taking their input and put it into a master plan type situation. So I'll let you have Larry and Andrew.
Thank you, Tab. Let me push the button. If you want to. Just sit there. Okay, I'm Larry Kurtz, and this is Andrew. Just familiarize you with our project. As you can see on the screen, the project is south of the fire station along the river called South Riverside Park, and that's a map to get you oriented. This is, oh, you can't see that, can you?
No.
Okay, so. Where's that mouse? There it is. Okay, so there, that, if you can see, that is where the fire station is. Let's go to the next slide. I think everybody's pretty familiar with the location. The city has charged us, our objective is to analyze the site and the existing buildings, develop a master plan that includes the preservation of the Exchange Building, the Protos Building, options, river access, and feasibility of the farmer's market relocation, and also to include cost estimates so we can evaluate how that might be phased. Something we do when we're designing outer space versus a building is, it's called placemaking, I'm sorry. And in that, we like to try to figure out what our activities are going to be first. We don't want to come and propose a big project, you know, build it, then they will come. We think that's a fallacy, and we think that we need to encourage the activities first to shape the space. We also want to build community support before we do any building. So we was, we would schedule hybrid events, is what we're planning on doing, with the farmer's market activities, and then if we have success with the events, that'll be the proof of our concept, and then we would do the construction of what our master plan might be. So our starting point is to consider the feasibility park as a new home for the farmer's market. And in this, we met two, three times with the farmer's market people, and we got their ideas. You can see this is just an example of what we took in, everybody's ideas, tried to let everybody speak and talk and, you know, submit ideas without judgment, and to take that back to the drawing board. So, some of those committees represented were the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street, the farmer's market, the garden club, the Historic Preservation Commission, Leeser Services Commission, Rail Trail Committee, as well as other local interested business people. And I'll let Andrew talk to you about the building, so he's a history buff.
Nut. So, the, there are two buildings on the site that we're discussing. We have the Exchange Building, which was historically a, an enterprise that had a weigh scale in front of it, where you could bring trucks up and weigh the produce for sale on the adjoining railroad. This, the South Riverside Park area, as many of you know, is right south of the depot, and it was Waverly's rail yard, the primary center there. So the Farmer's Exchange Building is one of the two buildings still standing there. It's the better condition of the two, and it's fairly, it's weathered the years fairly well, and we feel like it is feasible and a good idea to repair and preserve that building. And we'll show in the next slide a few other things, but we can, this building, one of the things that we need to identify is what's, what's its purpose? What are we preserving it for? Obviously, it has a, some, it's been, it's considered historic as a contributing resource to the historic district that is adjoining there, the Sturvent House District, and so we are, we believe that that, the building has integrity, is a contributing member, there's reasons to say that for its own sake, but how can it support the park? So we feel like the space there gives us a building that is already there, that can be adapted to serve as a support functions for the park as it grows, and we'll get into all the aspects that that can include. So, the last part about it is that it's also highly visible, and as we've gone through this process and talked with different members of the community in this public committee, we've talked about how the Exchange Park may be its name, like the name of the park may change, or the emphasis could be on both that building, the rail yard, history, the district that's adjoining it. So it would be a good face of that park. Slide please. So, looking at preservation of the building, as I said, the exterior is in fairly good condition, considering its years, and it's just, it hasn't served an active function for a while, so you would expect some deterioration over time. So we'd be looking at repairing the roof, which is actually in quite good condition. There's a specialty tile on the roof that can be repaired. There's only some damaged sections, and most of it can really be left as is. And there's woodwork along the edges that would need to be at least repaint, scraped and repainted, but some soft sections would be replaced. The, there's about 12 windows, depending on how you count, they're divisions, 12 openings that we'd be asking to be restored and repaired. We feel that that can occur nicely. And then clean up the masonry. Actually, the tuck pointing isn't as bad a shape as most people associate with older buildings, so it's mostly a cleaning. The four foot off the ground has been fairly weathered and dirty at this time. And then, I mentioned the weigh station before. I think a lot of the guts and pieces of that are still there, they're just grown over. And so, sorry. And so, if we recover the, or uncover the weigh station elements, we could, that could be something that could be incorporated visually for the public to understand what that building was, and, next slide, please. So in addition to preserving it, having it, providing more functions, we were talking about making it kind of the poster child potentially of the park as it grows around it, with some interpretive signage that kind of tells the story of the building itself, the adjoining rail yard. The, these are, it's a fairly small screen to show some of these things. This is a little bigger, but the north side is kind of a blank wall. That would be a good place to show a mural potentially, bring some public art component in. And then the weigh station, if uncovered, would be a good location to bring a primary path through and in front of the park. One of the smaller components of the mass, overall master plan that we'll be discussing is to potentially divert the, or provide a second branch of the rail trail, which currently goes behind the fire station, in front of the fire station, because it would have more high visibility, would take you past this building, would, would allow this building some more visibility and use. And so the last thing that we're kind of showing here in this, this image is a bike repair station, would be a nice thing to have kind of along that location, it'd be a nice hub. So, those are some of the smaller strategies. The interior?
Could I have you go back to that picture? I just have a question. Could you tell us, do you know, what is this interesting looking white post in the front of the building?
I think it's, as any baller do you see today, for the trucks that were driving up to that weigh station to not hit the corner of the building, but it does have a nice pyramidal shape, and it was something that I was considering, maybe if we have interpretive signage in other portions of the park, we maybe go, use that same type of shape, and then thereby kind of bring that image throughout. So the interior is fairly simple. It's roughly, I think, 46 by 26, and it may be good as an, potentially, an interior stall of a farmer's market, or potentially, as the group discussed, maybe we identify a, a vendor, like a Rogers Market, that would be able to lease that space kind of on a, more than just the weekend basis. So there's a lot of, we feel like there is not, at this time, there's not the impetus to change everything about the building, try to leave it in as good a condition as possible, and resurrect portions of it. And the main amenity that we're showing at the earlier stages of the overall master planning is to just enlarge the existing bathroom there, and, and make that functional for the park as the park grows, and we'll continue talking. So the next building is the Produce Building. That is the longer building that is on the site, that is, was being used as park storage for the Parks and Rec. It's currently, they, they have moved those functions elsewhere, so it's currently sitting vacant, and it's quite dilapidated, as far as all four sides of it are exhibiting cracking, and we'll show that on the next slide. The roof has issues, but we're identifying the foundations as being ones that are kind of, tell the best story about the building. We'll show a picture of those in a minute as well. And this, so that I, if the foundations are kept, if the, if the building itself is removed, which is what we're recommending, then the, the ghost, the outline of the, this oddly shaped building, it's, it's trapezoidal, would be potentially its most interesting feature, because the trapezoidal floor plan is due to, it's being inserted among the rail lines, and the foundations are very likely Waverly-made concrete textured block that you see in some of the neighborhoods around. So next slide, please. Try to move through this a little quicker here, but the, all four sides of the building, we're showing some examples, have masonry cracks and damage, are being supported by reinforcing steel already, and there, certainly you can, there's, the, all of these items could be addressed, but the cost to address them is fairly substantial, and the building itself is, is, in the committee, we had not identified functions that would best serve the overall master plan of the, of this area. So the bottom right there, you can see the textured block, and that you may recognize because it's used throughout Waverly, because we had a block factory locally. trapezoidal floor plan is due to, it's being inserted among the rail lines and the foundations are very likely Waverly made concrete textured block that you see in some of the neighborhoods around. So, next slide, please. Try to move through this a little quicker here, but the, all four sides of the building, we're showing some examples, have masonry cracks and damage, are being supported by reinforcing steel already. And there, certainly you can, there's, the, all of these items could be addressed, but the cost to address them is fairly substantial and the building itself is, in the committee, we had not identified functions that would best serve the overall master plan of the, of this area. So, the bottom right there, you can see the textured block and that you may recognize because it's used throughout Waverly, because we had a block factory locally. So, next slide. This is also part of the historic district, just like the scale building, and that means that it's been fairly well documented. So, this is a, just a quick slide, not intended to be read, but just showing that it is part, it's already been surveyed as part of the district and its, its history of use has been written down. Next slide, please. And this is difficult to see, but there's a 1960s aerial showing it and a very early 1900s insurance map showing both the scale building on the upper red arrow and the produce building on the lower. Again, this is just showing that it's been documented well, so if it, if the building is torn down for its condition, we kind of have a record of it being an ancillary building for that scale building. So, quick recap for the two buildings. One would be, the scale building would be, or exchange building, it's kind of difficult. It's a farmer's exchange scale building, so there's a lot of terms you can identify it with. That we are proposing to restore and support other functions and the produce building we're recommending to remove and keep the foundations and we'll, more on that later. And we'll talk, turn it over to Larry for the riverside improvements.
The other of our charges was to provide river access and open up the views to the river. When we looked at the access, I mean, it's really hard to get down there without breaking your ankle. A lot of garbage debris and glass and concrete and all kinds of junk down there, but it does have a good rocky bottom at the river, so it's pretty walkable once you get down there. Lot of thick foliage and various things that we want to maybe remove to open the views. Next slide. So, these, this is just a slide showing some of that, no view on the left, some dying trees and some barbecues that aren't being used, some concrete block and glass that's strewn along the base, you know, when, when a river is not accessible, it seems to be a place that people are not afraid to throw their garbage. Next slide. So, the committee-supported approach to this was to increase the visibility of the river and provide potential low slope access ADA type of access to the river bottom and to clean up everything. Next slide. So, this is a concept drawing that the committee supported to gain that under 5% access. It takes about 400 foot of path to get down to the river bottom. This shows access beginning at the top, at basically where the two buildings are and proceeding upriver to the farthest portion of the city-owned land by the fire station to get to the bottom and then south or downriver, another 400 feet. To do this, you know, we would need to work with the Army Corps of Engineer and get a NORI certificate and make sure that this shore is rearmored, but we can do that and we've done that in the past. Next slide. So, you can see this, the concept section here is that we can't add any soil to the river, but we can only subtract. So, this is just a concept drawing of how we would be taking some soil out, rearming the shoreline and then protecting the trees that we can that are older and in good shape. Next slide. So, in the farmer's market analysis, we talked with the farmer's market people at everybody and thought, really, the best, the bad thing about what they have now is they, they don't have any amenities, restrooms, they have to go over to Quick Star. They don't have power, they don't have seating, they don't have a shelter that they don't bring themselves and they have low visibility and traffic and they think that the location is not engaging. Next slide. So, in our study of other farmer's markets, you know, if you've been to any, you know, a lot of activities seem to, like all boats rise with the tide. So, we would encourage the farmer's market people to invite more activities, song and dance, move to the next one. Lively markets seem to have a lot of other things, usually have a shelter and this shows accessibility for the cars to back right up to it and sell right off the back of their vehicles. Next. So, and this slide shows really a lot of the activity with a splash pad, music and all, all these variety of events and the natural seating in play, history, all these things we could incorporate to this and this is what we're proposing to do at the site in what we call that placemaking exercises. Start with the activities and then if people come, then we'll build what we want to do. So. So, our master plan has taken into account these things and this is a scale drawing showing the exchange building, I'm going to point to that. The reconstruction of an open shelter over the old storage building, the potential of a different access for buses, handicap parking up in the corner here, plaza that starts at the top that could be a splash pad. And you can see a lot of little pink tents, if you will, that shows a really expandable way we could expand the farmer's market if we have overflow. So, next slide. The cost estimates are here and I don't know if we want to go over all of those here at this meeting, but the pie charts are probably the easiest to understand. First phase and the phasing, I'll just go through it quickly. The tree inventory and thinning would be the phase, what we'd suggest for phase one, it's 2% of the budget. At 27,000, the produce building removal, 73,000. That includes a new brick type floor in that space. The exchange building removal of 63,000. The river access and bank improvements of 310,000. And then, the bike trail improvements, 39,000. The themed plaza at the top, if the activities take off, would be 163,000. The large park shelter is 298,000. That's a prefab unit that we priced and, to be constructed. And then, water feature splash pad, has a large range, but we included $200,000 for that. So, in the next pie chart, we did do the phasing by summary. Phase one would be 14% of that budget. Phase one A, I believe it's 310. Yep, yep, that's the, that's the gold, 26%. 17% on the third phase and the, the third phase, 42% would be that plaza and all of those amenities if this, the site takes off. Next slide. This is a rendering of what we, we think the site could be if, if all of those activities do go ahead. You can see the shelter on the left in the, with the red roof would be an open air shelter where the farmer's market could operate or could be rented for other activities. The scale building or the exchange building is on the right-hand side as a, just a service bathroom to the space. You can see the splash pad is the big circular pad there at the top of the access to the river. You can see the access then down to the river with the rock riprap and reinforced bank improvements implanted. So, that's where we've come with the committee and that's what we think the site potential could be if all of those activities are realized and the farmer's market activity takes off. Are there any questions?
So, with this, the farmer's market proposal, you're, you're suggesting taking down the old building, putting up a new shelter without, without walls?
Right. We're proposing an open shelter if that activity takes place. It's last, later in the phasing, won't.
Yeah, it's phase three, right? I think it's excellent. I think phase one is definitely something to look forward to doing right away. I mean, restoring the, the old exchange building, I think, would be a great idea and it's always nice and, in Waverly, we preserve our history instead of tearing it down, so I think that's great that you're building the park around that. I also know we have a lot of benches and things along the current path and along the river itself that were donated by, you know, people who passed away or, you know, things like that and families that don't have a very good river view. So, by trimming the trees and those hedges, maybe those benches would be used more often as a nice scenic way to look on the river, so.
I didn't really highlight, but that we do have a, kind of a railroad theme in the paving that we show there with the historical signs at both ends and a gateway to that. You might see it on this plan, is the yellow strip. It's a, it's a paving railroad track and at the end, we have a, we'll have a history, historical signage, et cetera, and a gateway on the one side. So, you kind of always know where, where you're, where you're at is in history with this, this space.
Any other questions from council? All right, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is the, voice is going. First reading of ordinance 1029, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of 4.4 acres on the northwest corner of Fourth Street Southwest and 10th Avenue Southwest from single-family residential R1 to commercial C2 and for amending the Waverly future land use map from residential to commercial and setting a public hearing. Bill or James, you want to kind of, we'll turn it over to Ben.
Good evening, everybody. So, the subject property in question is at the northwest corner of Fourth Street Southwest and 10th Avenue Southwest. It's currently residential usage, currently zoned an R1 designation consisting of 4.4 acres. The request has come forward to rezone it to a C2, which is a general commercial district. We have Casey's Marketing making the request. When staff studied the location, it does have existing water and sanitary sewer capabilities. To the north, you have condominiums, single-family homes. To the west, you have the city Waverly Golf Course. To the south, you have 10th Avenue Southwest and the Baptist Church. To the east, you have Fourth Street Southwest and the city cemetery. So, as you can see, when you look at the, you know, the online documents there, you can notice that the future land use plan does support this request. There is the portion that is shown as residential, however, that was to include the existing residents on the property when we did the future land use map. So, the request is also to amend the future land use map to change all of the property to commercial, it's more of a formality, but the intent of the land use plan does show the frontage as commercial, which is the primary interest of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the public at large when they considered the future land use, that major frontages would have a commercial component to it because it's more desirable. So, we recognize too with this request that Fourth Street Southwest, any potential entrances, you know, there may be a lot of questions about that and we know the DOT is going to be looking at that. We're going to take some direction from them on that. We do also have a penciled in project at the city here and you may have heard about it, changing the Fourth Street Southwest, improving that corridor generally from the Burger King to Bremer Avenue. Some of the questions may be, should we continue that closer to 10th Avenue to make it like a three lane, so you have a more, more of a three lane with a center left turn lane capability. And also addition to that, you have two existing driveways on 10th Avenue, so entrance from that way can be also considered. We probably desire it to be a one entrance versus two separate ones, but again, that will come later in the process with the site plan review. So, what you should be looking at tonight is the future land use plan, does the request support that? Does the existing location, does it support having entrances in and out? So, things of that nature. Is there anything that I may have not addressed that you have questions on or anything I can help you with when understanding the request?
Currently, it's a single parcel, there aren't two parcels?
That's correct. So, it's one property and on the future land use map, what caused maybe some confusion was we showed the area with the residence as a yellow area, but essentially it's one property with the two designations. The intent all along was to show that the frontage on there would be commercial. The question was always about the residence, but here you have a request to acquire the whole property, including the residence, and change it into a commercial designation.
So, that's, just so our public and everybody knows too, but that's the, what's going to happen, they, their proposal is to purchase this property, tear down the home and then where the future land use plan has just the frontage commercial, they're going to take that whole residential area where the home was and move farther north with it.
That's correct. The whole property, the whole 4.4 acres, right.
We have guests here to kind of present a little bit?
I believe they are here to address any questions and if they're up for it, I think they'd like to show you some concepts.
Some citizens that have questions as well, so.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Wally Pelz with Pelz Engineering Company, 2323 Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50316. If you can give me just a moment, I can get my HD mic set up here and we can give you some, we think, we think pictures always speak words of what something will look like, so we have a 3D rendering to show you from multiple viewports.
Can everybody see it on your screens up there?
No.
Yeah, I figured that out.
You might want to check the resolution, I mean, our screen says there's an error with the.
Do I need to go down in resolution?
1024 by 768. I don't know if that helps.
If that doesn't work, we can put this under here if we need to.
Oh, okay.
768.
Coming up there. There it is. Perfect.
Is it on your screens or no?
No.
Not yet.
I don't know how the TV works, but if it's showing on the, I mean, TV isn't live TV, but if it's showing on these TVs, does it show for people watching at home or how does that work?
Should on that one, I think, right now.
Even if it's not.
If it's on there, it should be on there.
Yeah.
Let me just put it there.
Let's just try that.
All right.
I just, you know, these monitors are older, so they don't support certain resolutions and all that kind of good stuff. Yeah.
This is just a brief view of the internal of our store. So, just to give you an idea of what a new Casey's looks like, if you haven't been in one recently. Oh, sorry, yep. Do you mind if I sit down? Is that, it would make it a little bit easier to navigate. So, this should give you the internals of what a new store looks like that we're proposing at this location. It allows for seating. We found that in a lot of communities, people are hanging around, drinking coffee, talking about their morning things and like to have a table to sit down or eat one of the foods that we've provided. So, that is the internal. The aerial view that we have is, as you can see, this is the condo, I believe, this is the residence to the south. What we're proposing to do, can't see that?
Let's move it down, there you go.
Can you see it now? Is that as wide as it'll go?
That's good.
Can you see that now? All right. So, as we look over here, that's, I believe, the condo, that I believe is that residence with the garage entrance with that access drive. This is showing a proposed.
This is showing a proposed fence separating the properties. This is our main facility from the top. This is our proposed car wash, our canopy bay, and we can switch it to a night view to give you just some isometrics of when we put on our... All of our stores use LED lighting now, so it's very sharp, very direct, good cutoffs. It is bright, but it is very directionally downward.
Can you go to the picture before?
Sure.
Is it okay to ask questions while you're presenting?
Oh, absolutely.
So, from the house...
From here.
That's the condo, right?
Yes.
But, the current home is right there. Yep, where you just pointed, right? So, how far is it from there to the closest building that you would be constructing?
The distance here?
No. I mean, I kind of know where the... Well, I know where the condos sit too, but...
Okay. It's roughly... We're 109 feet north of that fence, which is roughly on the property line. The condos and that home, one of them sits at 30-some feet just past the building setback. The other one's a little bit further, and I don't recall exactly how far that is, but if you total those up, you're in the 140-feet range.
And the elevation, I mean, for the lighting then would be important too, I would think, because these condos sit a good bit lower.
Correct. Our idea is to have the fence there, and then as we push our lights, they're a split canopy, and we can do sharp cutoffs on the back, so they don't... You don't see the backside of that light when you're looking up. It's just a simple metal plate that kind of boxes it in and makes sure it shines in our direction.
Did I see in some of the information supplied that the trees around the house would stay? You would just take the house down, or...
I believe because of the grades that I will be able to save some of them, but I can't tell you which ones I can... And it depends on the... We haven't studied the trees yet to which species they are. Some are very finicky when you mess around with their drip line. So, I don't want to make any guarantees that we could save that.
Even the trees that are there, and I would say they don't really shield very much.
So, ideally, one of the discussions we've had since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is to add a pretty dense screen buffer of evergreens and other vegetation that stays pretty thick, so it's, you know, four-season type of screening. In addition, we can do a taller fence. Sometimes... That's received two ways. Sometimes people like the eight-foot fence, sometimes they don't. But, we can do either or, or a combination of both. Typically, we're looking to screen, buffer, shelter from noise in those types of situations. One of the things we tried to address as well is that we heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the discussion of the noise from the car wash. You know, the dryers are fairly loud. The technology's getting better that they're not. However, we do propose to have... It'll be on this... On this one. We do propose to have... Excuse me. Fully enclosed doors that during... After 5:00, that those doors would shut during operation, keeping them open during the day. We do like to have some drying effect on the equipment and different things during daily operations, but after 5:00, we can program the doors to close with every car wash and then set, you know, put a sunset on it. We don't like people running through there late at night either because it's... Sometimes you have to maintain it. Cars get stuck. Things get broken. So, ideally, we're looking to do that.
And that's on the south side?
On the south side, yes. And there would be doors on the north side as well. It is fully enclosed if we... During certain operations.
But, in terms of where it would sit in relationship to the main building, is it on the south side of the building?
It's due west.
West?
Yep.
Okay.
It's due west. It's a little bit tucked up to the north from the main building. And the main reason it's pushed that far is because the grades on this direction, I need a flat surface for flat entries for both de-icing during the winter. We like to warm the paving so it melts, but we like to keep that surface as flat as possible because if I get ice buildup on it, I don't want people sliding in and out of it. So, that's the purpose of that.
Again, just for people looking at home, on this picture, Fourth Street is on the bottom of the picture.
That is correct.
Your car wash, the... Looks like the entry to the car wash is from north going south.
That is correct. They would pull in from this direction and... Which means the dryers and blowers are on this side.
Do you anticipate right turn only off of Fourth, or are you going to allow people to re-enter onto Fourth from that east side?
Ideally, from what the studies that we've done, we've done many traffic studies for our Casey's stores, worked with the DOT, we'll more than likely defer to them. I don't anticipate much traffic coming this way and in. I would anticipate them using the signal off of Fourth to get in, especially during the peak hours when our peak usages are when people are commuting to work and coming back home from work and during lunch hour. And then, it has a tendency to figure itself out, but most of the time, if we have an available turn signal to get us to an entrance, that is the preferred route. It splits about 75/20. So, should the DOT restrict us, you know, and extend this median along there, it would become a right-in, right-out. Of course, we would take as much access as they would allow us, but we'll defer to what their decision is on this access. I don't have my mouse, so this moves really fast. Sometimes you'll see the sky. If I, you know, point up, you can see the nice blue sky, which I don't intend on doing, but it should give you a rough idea. It's the color of brick with some lighter blonde accent colors on the corners as well as with some stone, typically like a limestone or a split face, shown in those different locations. Those are the colors. It gives you just a feel. This is showing actually a five-foot fence in the rendering, because I don't think I... We have one that's actually six-foot. Most of the time, we use double-sided cedar, so it's double-box shadowed, so you can't see through it. It also helps with noise because there's a board on the other side where there's a split on this side, so you end up with a kind of a double wall. Our intention is to save as much vegetation as is existing along that edge. And then that shows the access over to Fourth. And if we look at the other view, this is looking along Fourth to the north, basically standing at the corner. You should be familiar with the arbor vida that are planted across the street, and that might be a similar... Since those are already planted and they've done well in this climate, we might specify a whole bunch of those along that northern boundary just to create segregation between the two. That's a look down the corner. Look at our sign and then down 10th. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Other debt property slopes to the west, is it going to be considerable to fill on a retaining wall then on the...
Yeah, we'll flatten it out. We'll be bringing in some fill. The other half of the property actually lies in a floodway district, which the western portion of it. So, that's going to remain green space, which allows us to lessen somewhat of our stormwater detention because I have so much green space versus hard surface. And then in this location, I would... We're showing underground detention, so...
Is your plan, like you said, to have the water runoff into... In the west toward the golf course?
It would, yep. We'd collect it. At least my preliminary versions. They haven't cut me loose yet on the complete site plan details, which we would come back with a complete site plan after zoning, giving you all those details.
Right, that is... There is a floodplain that runs through there, and then every time it rains, I mean, that creek fills up pretty good and flows into the pond by the number-two green in there, so...
Right. It would be... We would have to comply with all things, so we would more than likely detain it above that, wherever that flood level is, and then discharge at a rate... I haven't studied your ordinance yet, but typically, it's a five-year release rate that you can't exceed, so even when you have a 100-year storm, we can't go more than five-year release rate pre-development or stormwater quality if you've done that. For the most part, we're also doing stormwater quality control, which is, again, an underground detention with a filtered section underground that gets in through the rock, and we try to recharge as much groundwater as we can, so...
Yeah, it's just one concern because I know that area looks dry most of the time, but when it does rain, it gets a pretty big stream going through there, so...
Our intention is never to add.
Sure.
This question may sound like it's coming out of left field, but has Casey's considered any other locations in Waverly for this gas station? If so, can you say where else they may have considered?
I would have to defer that to Bryce Loring, who's in the audience this evening. I'm just an engineer, so...
That's a great quote, by the way.
I'm just an engineer.
Heard that before.
My name is...
You can pick it up.
My name is Bryce Loring. I'm with Real Estate and Store Development at Casey's General Stores. This location is the most desired location that we've come across in Waverly, and we have not looked at any other locations.
Along that same lines, I've had a few people ask if you'll continue to operate two stores, or would this become your primary location?
We would continue to operate two stores.
I know we have some people in the audience wanted to ask some questions. If we can go ahead and invite them up. Any of my audience members have questions at this time? Yeah, you can pull that, yep.
And I don't know if they were ready to speak tonight because they didn't think they would get an opportunity, but...
They're deciding.
Yeah. This is the...
My name is Jim Jantsch, and I'm an adjoining property owner. We just really came to this as kind of a question-answer, information gathering, did not prepare comments or rebuttals or anything like that whatsoever. So, we, now that we've heard the basic plans, some questions, very good questions, by the way, asked, I think now it's our time to go back and think, and we'll be back at the December 4th meeting. Thank you for that.
Yep. Okay. This is a little unusual. Typically, the first reading and setting the public hearing is kind of a basic formality and get that, but we've got some good questions out, and we've got some information presented, so that was good.
Wonderful. Honorable Mayor, if I could suggest, if any of the residents would like to leave me their information, I can give them my business card. It's much easier for us to address things via email instead of a public forum. We like to be good neighbors and appease our neighbors as best as we can and try not to be the nuisance and try not to be the bad neighbor. So, if I could suggest to anyone who wants, please ask me for a business card. It has my email, my cellphone, my direct line at my office, and if you would direct any changes or suggestions you might have, we'd be happy to entertain them. Thank you.
I guess that's what I was going to comment on you. It was great to see you've already tried to incorporate a little bit of the feedback from planning and zoning, and I would encourage everybody to keep that line of communication open as it goes.
And Ben will have that information, so that if you don't get a card, Ben will get that information.
Carl is going to get his card as well, the information here at the city. Okay, council, need to have a motion on this?
I would move the first reading ordinance 1029, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of 4.4 acres on the northwest corner of Fourth Street Southwest and 10th Avenue Southwest from single-family residential R1 to commercial C2 and for amending the Waverly future use map from residential to commercial and setting December 4th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the time, date, and place for a public hearing.
Moved? Any further council discussion on this?
I guess before I would vote for this, I think I'd like to see some of the concerns of the residents around there addressed and make sure that they're happy with any changes that they would make before I'd vote for this.
Yeah, I agree, and I've talked with a couple of them. Tonight is setting the kind of the formal public hearing in the fourth is the one where hopefully we can get most of those questions hammered out and concerns addressed.
I would just like to say that I have serious reservations about this idea, and I'm going to vote for the... To approve the first reading mainly because I want to give the citizens a chance to speak a second time around, but at this point, I'm pretty dubious.
Do we expect to have a response from the DOT by the second reading, or...
We have two weeks, and they've had it for a week or two, I think, already so far, so I would assume we should have some response from them.
Because I do have some concerns about access off of Fourth Street and the hill and those type of things, so it'll be... I think for me to be able to weigh in, we need to understand where they're at and then understand if we can make alternate recommendations like right turn in only, no exit from Fourth Street, those type of things.
We'll reach out and make sure that we have feedback from the DOT.
Roll call vote.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Gade?
No.
Kangas?
Yes.
Lampy?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
A vote of four to two. It moves to the public hearing. Item number three on the agenda is approved purchase of Civic Center replacement restroom partitions from Ramco Construction. More information from TAB.
Good evening. This is a general item that is over 10,000 and slightly over budget the amount, so that's how come we're here. We'd like to replace the partitions in the restrooms here in this building. They're 25 years old, and we like to do the solid plastic ones like everyone else has in newer buildings.
So, what's exactly wrong with the ones that we have?
They're rusted. Some of the doors don't work. They're just pretty unsightly. I didn't want to take pictures.
We could go take a tour.
Take a tour.
You have any quotes, just repair and paint, maybe?
I don't.
Would it be possible to maybe get just a...
It would be possible. This is the restrooms that the public use here. It's kind of a reflection upon the building. We're trying to upgrade some things as we go along. This was on the list for this year. We'd probably have to take panels down, sandblasts them, repaint them.
I can speak for the handicapped stall in the women's bathroom because if a handicap person was going to use that, there is no way they could get it locked because you have to lift up on the door to lock it. to lift up on the door to lock it, and it's been adjusted hundreds of times.
Yeah, same with the men's.
Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve a purchase of Civic Center replacement restroom partitions from Ramco Construction of Waverly, Iowa for $10,715.
Second.
And moved and seconded, further discussion from council? It's a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No? Approved.
Thank you.
Item number four is Resolution 132, a resolution certification filed by the Finance Director to the Breamer County Auditor detailing the amount of new loans, advances, and indebtedness which qualify for payment from tax increment revenues of the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. It's over to Jennifer or James.
Each year, we have to certify to the county auditor the indebtedness of our TIF districts, and since I've been here, we certify the amounts that we owe, that we're obligated to pay. We don't ask for any extra. So the amounts in front of you are the amounts, the $1.3 million is what we owe in obligations to cover that debt.
Just for clarification, the Carmi flavors is not for their new building out on the north industrial park? They didn't meet some of the obligations there or?
Correct. It's the other, there was two of them. This is the other one.
Do we have a motion on this?
Would move Resolution 17132, a resolution certification filed by the financial, Finance Director to the Breamer County Auditor detailing the amount of new loans, advances, and indebtedness with quality or qualify of payment from tax increment revenues of the city Unified Urban Renewal Plan.
Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Do you have, on here, it has the information of when the date was approved for each one of these. Do you have the date of when each of these sunset and go off, like the books or how long? They normally be doing for 10 years, I think, right? But.
Are you talking about the rebates or debt obligation?
The, what is it, the second page, the?
The TIF payments.
Yeah, TIF payments, indebtedness.
The rebates.
The rebates. It's, Fairway is the last year.
Okay.
Carmi has a couple of years left, and GMT, I believe, has one after this year. Like to get you the exact amounts?
I was just curious. I mean, I know we show the date approved, but we don't show like the final date, so I know we usually kind of do 10 years, but each one's a little different, so.
And when the budget is discussed, that sheet will be there to identify when they go off.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion? Roll call vote?
Kangas?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Gade?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Gade?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Lampy?
James, further on this?
I know we discussed this at Thursday's meeting. It's one of the bigger projects we're looking at for next year. When the overall bids came in for the entire project, Mike went back and we tried to find a way to maybe break it into a couple of projects because it was more than we anticipated. You know, citing the safety needs for the railroad crossing and the federal funding that we've already acquired for this, it seemed like a good fit to... If we're going to move forward with any of it, this would be the one we would move forward with to get that railroad issue resolved. So what we're bringing for you today is asking you to approve getting the final... Or getting a PSA together so they can present it to you for the December 4th meeting, I believe. That would be the actual approval date of it. So we're just looking for direction to actually get the agreement drafted by McClure and then brought to you for a signature on the 4th. And this will do the final plans for that first phase for the railroad piece of it.
So looking at this, it doesn't... I mean, it's hard to tell. We talked about extending that northward on 20th up to Knight Avenue.
Right.
It will include that? Okay. That was... Just looking at the shaded area on the diagrams, it wasn't quite up there, but...
We'll make sure that request is part of this agreement.
And again, since this is work that we haven't approved in any budget this week, just to get it ready to bid, we'd still make a decision if we...
Correct.
We get a motion?
I'll move Resolution 17-133, Resolution authorizing the preparation of a professional services agreement with McClure Engineering Company for the preparation of construction plans and specifications for the railroad crossing improvements project at 20th Street Northwest and Fifth Avenue Northwest.
Second.
And moved and seconded, further discussion? Roll call vote?
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Nothing, that is approved. Move to Resolution 17-134, Resolution accepting sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation 2017 project is complete and approving final pay request to Visu Sewer Incorporated, Peewaqui, Wisconsin.
Put this meeting over with quick.
Do we have a motion on this?
I'll move Resolution 17134, Resolution accepting sanitary manhole rehabilitation 2017 project is complete, approving final pay request in an amount of $23,671.10 to Visu Sewer Incorporated of Peewaqui, Wisconsin.
Second.
And moved and seconded, further discussion from the council? Everything is good, Mike? Roll call vote?
McKenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Vote of six to nothing. 17134 is approved. Next resolution is Resolution 17135, a resolution approving the FAA application for federal assistance for the airport runway 29 extension project at the Waverly Municipal Airport. Further on this, James or Mike?
We're just going ahead to apply to get our 90% reimbursement from the federal government for the airport expansion. And so the engineering services at McClure provided will assist, but we're just trying to get the application ready to make sure that it goes through, the funding is there. So that's kind of the gist of what we're asking for, is to approve the application.
Dealing with the FAA, it seems like everything kind of moves in the opposite direction than what we're accustomed to because they want us to approve the engineering agreement. That's been done. Then we make application for reimbursement for the professional engineering services. If they approve it, then we will then approve the grant award. So this is the same process that we've used on past projects for the engineering, for the construction, as well as the property acquisition.
Give a motion.
I will move Resolution 17135, a resolution approving the FAA application for federal assistance for the airport runway 29 extension project at the Waverly Municipal Airport.
Second.
Moved and seconded, council discussion? Go to a roll call vote?
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gade.
No.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
No.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Vote of four to two, the amendment for the resolution is approved. We'll go to Resolution... Item number eight, which is Resolution 17136, Resolution approving the acquisition of a parcel by tax sale for additional right-of-way in the southwest corner of the intersection of Fourth Street Southwest and Technology Place. More explanation on this, Bill?
Yes. There's a small piece of parcel there that's shown on that plat that we discovered hadn't been conveyed to any party by the original developer. And they had quit paying taxes, and I don't believe are even a valid corporation. So we're... We wanted to make sure that the city included that as part of the right-of-way so that if either party asked for access across that, that we wouldn't have one party controlling another, or somebody buying that and then holding up others that might use that, that area. So we're just going to make it part of the right-of-way. And the process is ready. The supervisors have already signed the assignment of certificate. Now all we have to do is pay the taxes and assume possession. And then we have to give notices of tax sale. So we have to give notices to Lakeville. They get so many days to respond. The worst-case scenario is that somebody would come in and pay our money back to us. And we would go back to having somebody else own it, so... But we don't expect that that'll happen.
So, Bill, you're saying the original developer still owns this property?
The corporation that was formed back in the 70s, I think it was, still has title to that property. Taxes haven't been paid since 2011. And nobody's identified... I think it's been held out for public sale and tax sale, and nobody's picked it up, I think, three times, actually.
Explain... Somebody does own it, but they haven't been paying taxes on it? Is that what you just said?
Somebody does own it, but they haven't been paying taxes.
Is that illegal?
Well, they just lose the right of the... I mean, this is the statutory method to make sure that property gets taxes paid on it. So they basically let somebody else pay the taxes and then give notice to that entity that they can come back and redeem it. If they don't, then we assume title to the property at some point.
Be like, if I didn't pay taxes on my home for... Eventually, my home would be taken away, and the city would have an option.
Yeah, that's really the way it happens because if you don't pay taxes, somebody else will... Usually, the people that do this all the time will come in and buy it at the public tax sale because they'll hopefully get their... They usually want to get their tax money back plus 2% per month. But in this situation, there really isn't any value to the parcel. That's why nobody's picked it up, and they don't want to get stuck with it. So that's why we're picking it up because we think it's going to have some value for future development on these properties.
So the only penalty is basically they lose this little bit of land. I mean, they're not getting...
Right.
They won't get charged and have to pay back taxes or anything like that?
This is the back taxes, actually.
So we pay the back taxes.
Right.
And then we own it.
And then we don't pay taxes.
City land, we don't pay taxes on.
Right.
That's an interesting way of saying it, yeah. Bailing out somebody just so that they don't have to pay taxes.
We're buying it for the back... For the taxes that they have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That area, that next parcel over, is the city's parcel. So it's really just adding to that parcel. So we're just really making the right-of-way be a larger right-of-way. And we want to control that drainage underneath that road so that we make sure it stays in good order.
Do we have a motion on this, council?
Would there be any plan... Well, do we need to make a motion for I can ask more questions, or...
Well, we can... I mean, we can ask questions. We can ask questions after the motion.
I know. It doesn't matter to me. I guess I'll do it. Move Resolution 17136, a resolution approving the acquisition of a parcel by tax sale of $343 for additional right-of-way in the southwest corner of the intersection of Fourth Street Southwest and Technology Place.
Move?
Second.
Seconded. Other questions?
I was just saying, now that we would own that parcel, would there be any chance plans to improve that intersection, to put, like, a right turn only in there, or things like that, to help improve traffic with the lights and stuff coming in and out of there?
Yes, we could consider that if the landowners request that.
I know that's... Well, I guess there's not a...
That gives us potential... We have the connection there, and we can actually allow that if that's the right thing to do at that time.
Other questions? Roll call vote?
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
A vote of six to nothing, Resolution 17136 passes. That is the end of regular business. We have reports from boards and commissions. We have the airport commission minutes from September 14th. We have our monthly financial report for October. Services commission minutes from October. Senior center calendar for... Okay. See those? Staff comments?
I don't believe we have any, sir. Although it's being debated at this point. Comments, anyone? We good?
Well, if I have an opportunity, I'll take it.
Sure.
He's just an engineer.
I heard that recently.
So if you missed Kway at 7:30 this morning, Tab... Tab came... Made it. So you almost forgot, but he got there in time. But one of the things that I do Monday morning when we have council meetings is talk about the various things that Public Services is doing. And a lot of it relates to maybe solid waste collection, yard waste operations, and the like. You know, we transition winter and then spring, and we talk about different things. But with Thanksgiving coming up, I want to point out that this is going to be a busy week for us. It's a curbside recycling week, and we have double route days because of the holidays. So Thursday's garbage will be picked up on Wednesday and recycling. So it's garbage and recycling this week. Your Thursday collection will be picked up on Wednesday, and if you're on the Friday route, it will be picked up on Monday. Now, with the holiday coming up, you know, you've got a lot of friends and family over. You might have some extra garbage that won't fit in your container. Please, please, please get a garbage sticker and use an additional bag. Don't try to, you know, get your in-laws to jump up and down and pack it in there because it won't come out. If the lid on the container is up, what they're going to do is they're going to remove one of your bags and empty your container and leave the bag there because this is about paying your fair share. So if you have that extra bag of garbage, please go to one of the convenience stores or grocery stores and for two bucks, get the sticker and put it on the bag. And if you have a great big 65-gallon container, you can try to balance it up on top. If not, sit down next to it, and we'll get it for you. Yard Waste Site is still open. They will be open on Saturday, but not Thursday or Friday of this week. We are still doing curbside collection of leaves that are bagged in biodegradable bags. So you have to call in, okay? We're not going to be driving around the community looking for them at this point. So if you're still doing some leaf collection, I know I was at the yard waste site this afternoon. It was very busy. There are lots of leaves that came down. It's going to be very windy tomorrow. And if you haven't raked them, maybe they'll blow into the neighbors. If you have, very much guarantee your neighbor's leaves will blow into your yard. Pumpkins. Drive around town, there's still some pumpkins out there. Yard Waste Site's a good place to dispose of them so that the kids don't do it for you. So lots of services that are still available as we go into late fall and the start of winter. And please take advantage of the yard waste site and the services that we're offering.
So, Mike, just to be clear, if your normal trash pickup day is Thursday, that happens on Wednesday this week?
This week, correct.
And if your normal day is Wednesday, it still is Wednesday?
Wednesday, yes.
So they're going to do double duty on Wednesday?
That's where we get the double route. And same thing on following Monday because they'll be picking up Monday's garbage as well as Friday's garbage and recyclables.
And yes, thank you for the extra... If you have extra trash bags, you need stickers on them.
That's correct.
That's been a little bit a problem in my area of the woods.
Little update, I know Thanksgiving has kind of been tossed out as a target with Bremer Avenue. Where are we at? And how long are we looking?
It's not going to happen this week. So we have our progress meeting on Wednesday. I guess we'll find out if next week's a possibility.
It's looking close.
Sidewalk work and the ADA ramps and kind of the connections a lot have been made, right? That's kind of the main... I mean, the streets forward, but...
South side still has to...
Well, they still have the five-foot strip to pour between basically the parking lane.
Yeah.
And that's also needed in order to open up all the side streets.
Yeah, right.
The weather's been holding okay. Weather has been all right for us, okay, for right now. We just can't have any early stuff coming. Okay, go to city council comments. I'll start with our guest council. Don't have anything. Edie.
No, thank you.
Dan?
No, thanks.
Wes?
I guess I would just say there's some important decisions coming up with the golf course and golf pro country club stuff. And so I would encourage the city to... We have a very good golf pro at the moment that is a Waverly-born person who loves his job and wants to stay here and wants to work for the city. And hopefully, we can get that worked out so that we can keep him and have a golf pro for a long, long time instead of rotating through them every three or four years, so...
Did he go through the PGA training, or is he...
I think he's got one year left.
It's a long process. It's a long process, but he's been doing it.
He's gone twice. I think it's a three-year course, if I'm correct, so...
Dan?
Study session this month. Do we know kind of what we're looking at there?
We really don't have anything from staff this late in the year to cover. And so we were looking at either canceling or if it was something council wanted to discuss. But with everything that we've accomplished and with everything we still have going on, trying to wrap up construction season and starting into budget, we just didn't have time to prepare anything specific for the November session. So I don't know if council has any wishes for that. If not, we can certainly cancel it and give you a breather in between, so...
We'd have to have a special session to come in and cancel that, though.
We talked to the league, Mickey Shields, and we would not necessarily have to do that. We have canceled meetings before without a formal cancellation on the agenda. As long as this posted, the cancellation itself, same as if it was a meeting itself, same places, media, et cetera, we could cancel that meeting without having a formal vote to do it. And that's according to League of Cities.
I thought our ordinance actually called for it.
Basically, be due to lack of agenda items.
So that would cancel Monday, the 27th, which would be a study session. And then the 4th would be our normal first meeting of the month.
Correct.
A couple other questions. I don't know how much input we have, but going west on Bremer as it goes from new construction to old, it's great that they have the bump sign right at the apex of that. I'm wondering if we could back the bump sign up.
That's in honor of the Winter Olympics coming up in February.
Or I've had several folks, once it gets snowy, that type of thing. It'd be great to have yellow striping on it or something like that, just to draw some attention to it.
Actually, it'll be repaired on Monday and Tuesday of next week. It'll be less... We were trying not to tell people so they wouldn't get one last shot at it, but they're going to correct that problem and make it less of a slope.
Yeah, they have to get traffic switched back over, right?
To the... It has to be traffic on the...
South side.
We'll have traffic on all sides, except what they'll do is they'll open it up and then they'll close one lane at a time and fix it with fast concrete.
So maybe Monday or Tuesday here, it may not be.
Or maybe Tuesday and Wednesday.
But the plan is they're going to fix it.
And then one last question from our pre-budget meeting. Do we have any indication? I know that half of the dry run project is being financed through local... Through sales tax. And there were some estimates made as far as growth and that type of thing. I assume we're keeping abreast of the anticipated growth to keep that funding stream going.
We're good. We're good. The Department of Revenue takes care of that usually. In the fourth quarter, we only get partial... We're doing so well that only part of the fourth quarter sales tax increments needed.
There's no way to bring in that extra to pay that off a little quicker, or...
No. They stick to the original payment.
They don't let us do that, so...
But that's...
Looking for those ideas to bring down some of the debt quicker and...
No, we look like we're in good shape. It's holding and maintaining, and we should be fine.
I just have a suggestion. I think it would be a good idea if anybody who shows up in the chamber is wearing a bowtie, he should be given preferential seating.
In a couple of weeks, he will.
Yeah.
That's true. My final comments? I guess when we had the whole proclamation with Black Friday and Cyber Monday and Giving Thursday, Small Business Saturday, you know, shop local, support Waverly businesses. That's... We've got some great local businesses. Get out some great presents and whatnot. Otherwise, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.